Do you have their equipment? I went that route too. It's not strong. You know, I theorize that we used our own equipment, then on their side. They might actually be following the connection in. So if you hardwire into your model. And so that you don't have any resource. Run a speech check on that and you're not getting it. Have concrete that. You know, if you're like on the 200 plan, but you only get in 100. That's a damn problem. There's a router looking at depending on the brand then. It's true that one.
My gear.
Yeah, common one. Look, imagine your house is so large that it shouldn't be.
To just have one bar.
Your step one now is talk something to the photo directly. Then just hit your baseline.
All right, in anticipation of our six. Thirty fiveish beginning. Please go ahead and put your phones on vibrate or silent. It's six thirty five, you're now opening up the start time Eatonville Council Workshop. This Tuesday, December twenty two thousand twenty two. First item to be discussed is water shutdown cost.
There.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stacey. Oh, I'm sorry. This is same thing we just said.
Good evening, everyone. And again, this is an important item and I'm happy, Councilwoman, that you brought this out. Just to give you some background on the situation, started in September. When we had the first water. By this particular contractor. This contractor name is Intense Communications Inc. And they're working on behalf of pathology thought and Florida. So they damaged a water line. That cost us eleven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. They paid for that repair. In addition to repairing the pipe. They also created damage to the service and the roadways. Staff went and got an estimate to fix that roadway. That estimate came in at seventy five thousand. They, they came back and said, that's too much. They want to do it themselves. They go and get their own estimate. They haven't heard anything back home. So that was the first incident in September of this year. Second instance was on October twenty seventh, October twenty seventh of this year. They also damaged the pipe. And that invoice, I mean, that cost to the town for repair that we called out. Two company, Frank Gate and Brownies. For a total of thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand, actually thirty thousand five hundred and fifteen. And I can send this information to all of them. We haven't been paid for it. So. And then there was another incident recently. While I was with the town on Thursday, December eighth. Fortunately, that was not a major break. But the cost to repair to me was four thousand one hundred and one dollars. So just to give you a quick summary. The overall damage that this particular contractor caused. Of this community. Over those three incidents, we're looking at forty two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. That they still owe us. In addition to repairing the road that is still. Still needs to be repaired. Plus the cost of all the water that was listed. So staff provided an estimate of those costs. The first incident was one point two million gallons. That went missing from the, from the, from the system. The second incident was about a million gallons. And the third incident was about thirty gallons. So in total, with the road surface repairs. Invoices that we've paid, but they haven't paid us back yet. Plus the cost of that water that was lost. We're looking at just over a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. Now, after the third incident. We basically stopped them from doing any work in this area. Staff has been trying to reach out to them over these past few months with no response. After we stopped them from doing the work. They requested a meeting. That meeting is scheduled for this Thursday. We will not get them to go ahead and do any work in this town until all of this is closed. So that got their attention. Obviously, we do not want to have this type of relationship with our vendors. But unfortunately, if this is not resolved. By meeting with them this week or attempt to resolve in this district, yes, so.
Questions. So I heard you say the pipe, I heard you say the road. What about personnel? Personnel costs, if that included.
So that's the cost of Albert is here by asking for that. So the number he gave me for total personnel plus the water. So labor, material, equipment on our side is about twelve thousand.
And that's included.
That's included.
What about police officers from that night?
That's. The one, the one, the second incident, you know, yeah.
Because my thing is, if, if this ever happened on that part, we need to pick up every single thing it is. We should not have one cost. And then also, there should be some kind of way that they are reimbursing us for our residents. Who had to go out and buy water without going to hurricane time as well. It should have been something else that was added to it, so.
Just, just the burden on our community. There's a cost to that. And right now, they're not showing any good faith effort. To try to resolve this. And this is becoming a pattern in. Populace.
Question for Mr. English. This is. Yeah, this is for him. There's no other pipes at a particular level because I guess they're hitting the pipe. So should they go out like, hey, where did close where pipes are, you know, usually they, they understand like a standard for all pipes should be eight feet. Are they just going too deep and hitting our pipes?
No, not necessarily. The one, the second is the pipe is eleven feet.
Wow, okay.
So there's not so many.
Thank you, next.
Do we have other contractors, do we have other contractors in our directory that need all time? And these types of incidents happening?
Yeah, instead of.
Yes, it is. Typically, what happens, you know. At our place, we call several contractors. It was the worst time, we saw the same thing, same concept, same day. Fine. The other facility, everything realized was falling apart. You know, kind of like whenever you fall and you're falling and things up next or things available. Most of the guys have been working the entire day. They're not like a tire department sitting waiting to respond like they always work until they're back there. So sometimes you get a little intention of giving them out because you call several of them. Because somebody can't figure. You know, none of them could do anything, they didn't come out. And it's been one family or two. Or contractors, a lot of times we're working for either one family or other family. The project development coming through at the same time.
Give me a second. A second break. That drain, it's not draining, so I'm gonna see if all that drain though. If it's under drain, it's essentially. So that's another charge that we got to get that. So out. My trucks. It's not draining properly.
Thank you. Item number two, discussion of the status of the D E O grant.
Thank you, Mira. This is a, this is a big deal. See, almost six million dollars. I'll share with you the status of that grant. Since I came on, I created a team. Because this, this is a complicated project. When you're dealing with federal grants. The management of that grant requires certain level of care. And expertise. So I've created an internal team. C R A, Public Works, Finance. I'll be overseeing the team. I've reached out to the state D E O. There was supposed to be a meeting, the council this week. But we will have periodic meetings with the state because they are very involved with this grant. Just to give you. The level of details that is required to manage this grant. This is a federal grant. That was provided to the state. The state then. The portion that they receive, they have allocated this six million, roughly six million to us. The state is responsible for reporting to the feds. It's very strict. The state will not jeopardize their grant program. Because if you don't follow the feds rule, you could lose all of your. So the state is going to be very strict with us. Because their reputation hinges on our performance. And I don't think that way. So I'll be overseeing this project. D E O is reviewing the procurement policy because that's part of the process. When we write the proposal for R F E, they will have to review it. It's gotta be compliant with certain federal procurement standards. Once they approve it, we will proceed and they will be monitoring the entire project. So I fully intend to be working closely with their contact person. And at this time. We are waiting for them to come back to us with the next steps.
Any questions, please, Mr. Stacey? All right, the next item, discussion of a water crisis grant.
Okay. I'm very concerned about everything that has been said that's very important and very good information for everyone. So we're going to stay as we really live within our town. And how costly, as you have heard in reports, and how costly that must mean to maintain stability until we get this project over. But my concern is about do we have a real crisis plan for our town? In the event, most of the times when we have a water break. It usually from back up and running for about twelve hours. The last one, the big thing that we had was around twelve hours. Something like that, say, no, thirteen hours. I believe it was. It wasn't. Okay, thank you. But if we have something that's going to belong to us two, three, four days, maybe a week, we don't know. Exactly. We do an actual plan to determine what is it that we need to do, our emergency impact. They ensure that even before this happens, just like pre-plan in case of. To get with the residents and have a plan on how much supply of water. But what I do in my home may not be the same that everybody else would be doing. I always have five of those five young plastic things that you get from Sam's. Fill it up with water, put the cap on it, and I'll leave it in the garage. Because occasionally, when we are down, we have limited of flushing the toilets. Washing clothes, washing dishes, and taking a bath. Those are the types of things that we need to put in place because of the condition that we have here in our town. To be able to get this project going. We don't want to be like some of the other cities and let Michigan and some of the other places to help. As you can see. Nationwide, there's a problem with water everywhere. There's a lack of adequate supply of water in a lot of our cities. So it's just more or less the proactive. To make sure that we have all the resources that we contacted, make sure that we have all of our supplies. These are just some things that I just want to bring to your attention. I know that we do a pretty good job on the water of ours. We make sure that everybody's on the same page. All businesses, homes, our schools, our churches, just the whole of our town. So I'd like to. We love, not only that, but will be really, really concerned if we have a major fire in this town. How will the firefighters react? If they're not able to tap into our water resources that we have. So it will be a real, limited concern that we have. Because we don't never know when one of these things is gonna freak. But I was on the corner of, I think it's that Washington, the last one, the big one that we don't have. That pipe is so old, I still have pictures of it. And it was way down in the ground. We were all standing there, this big open, rusty looking hole that been here since like maybe the fifties. Yes, yes. So and then our Public Works, they were very actively refining different parts around the local. To help to get that system up and running again. So we have adequate supplies of equipment that we can purchase ahead of time. Just having the chip for a just in case situation that might happen, it will occur any time. So that's my concerns about the crisis water plant.
Mira. Thank you, my friend, Mr. Stacey. How's Golden Ramon? This is the topic. If I had my wish, I wish. But that's twenty years ago. But we do not have any crisis water plant. In fact, we don't have any. There are so many things that are so critical. The infrastructure. That we don't have a plan in place. You mentioned the conditions of the pipe. I've had the, the opportunity to meet with our contractor, C P H, and I invited Scott to this meeting today. Steve is essentially our expert when it comes to these matters. We all have the Steve's. Infrastructure this year, this. There is no. There is no option B if something happens with our water system. There is no cross connection. Infrastructure is so old. That it's going to take a whole lot of money. And in fact, just for our, our sewer and wastewater, based on C P H estimates. We're looking at just under seventy five million dollars in today's dollars to address them. And it appears the solution in the past is let's look at grants. And even today, through the C R A discussion, I've adopted that approach. We cannot operate this town relying on grants. We have to have a strategy. We have to make some serious decisions. But not get to what happened with it. Because you, as, as a council responsible. But again, this is serious. My, my intent is not to scare you, but it is a serious matter. Filling up five gallons of water. Or having pumps is not the solution. You need a serious solution because this is the lifeblood of any project. And we are far from being, we are at this stage. And during my report, C A O report. I'm hoping to shed some light on some other issues that I've observed in my three weeks here. That requires serious attention in that extent. Water, sewer, wastewater. Requires serious attention. So when you all are discussing beautification projects and all these, you know, nice to have things. Keep in mind what is the fire. Every dollar matters. Grant matters, but it's not, you can't turn your hats on. We have to have a strategy. We have to have a plan. We have to start somewhere.
So let me just, I know this is a discussion. But even though it's a discussion. What is it that we need to do as leaders? And council members of this town to implement a water crisis plan for the, for the most of the time?
So Councilwoman, I want to make sure I interpret the comment correctly. Because I want to understand if your, your vision of a plan is a temporary fix or a permanent fix. If it is a permanent fix, if it's a, let me start with temporary fix. If it's a temporary fix, yeah, we can buy everyone five gallons of water, danger of storage, right? Or, you know, get contract with water trucks to bring water to the town. But that's not my interpretation of. Of the need of water. My, my interpretation of a crisis plan is solid, reliable infrastructure. And I'm hoping to discuss some of the solutions for us to get there when I provide my report in a few moments. Because if all. Everything you do as a board is connected. Every decision you make is connected. If it involves finances, it's connected. My hope is not to advise you to make piecemeal decisions when it comes to spending money. Every time you spend money, it needs to be strategic. It needs to be based on some degree of prioritization. And that's what I hope to. What do you think to do in a few moments?
That is, I don't, I don't, our discussion. So with that, I move that we adjourn our workshop. Yes, we move to the second hour of the C I. All of those. So we will adjourn our workshop until seven thirty.
That's.
So.
Um.
We have two minutes before the meeting begins, please let silence your phones and put them on vibration. All right, it's seven thirty, we are now convening the historic town of Eatonville regular council meeting for Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at seven thirty. This is. Please stand where you're stationed. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible,天地. First, I'm agenda is the approval of Eatonville. It was one thing, under reports it says it's from. It should not be. So that one. One change, now approve of your children. So is there a second? It's the move to second all the papers say I, I, all opposed. The agenda is approved, presentations and recognition. So Pastor Chris. The most qualified to preach the word of those that have gone first. So I recognize your steadfastness as leading this meeting. And I thank you for being a chaplain for this council. So today I present this proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, Town of Eatonville, Florida. Pastor Ronald A. Prinson, celebrating seventeenth pastoral anniversary. Whereas Pastor Ronald A. Prinson is the pastor of Beth to Hila Ministries, located in the city of Pastory, Florida. He is a longtime resident and friend of the town of Eatonville, where he serves as the appointed chaplain during the Eatonville Town Council meetings. He has, he has served the community and church congregants faithfully for seventeen years. And whereas Pastor Ronald A. Prinson is known by his compelling style of preaching and is committed to the teaching of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. He has a love and passion for Christmas ministry and is dedicated to the cause of life. And whereas, he accepted the Lord Jesus Christ on October ninth, nineteen eighty-three, as a born again child of God and servant of the Lord. Pastor Ronald A. Prinson unapologetically is a man of strong, godly convictions. And whereas Pastor Ronald A. Prinson started his pastoral journey with the lay mural, Moon Prinson, in which they were married twenty-eight years. He later, later wed Sabrina Washington, who serves alongside him at Beth to Hila Ministries. His seven children are also a support to his ministry and home. And whereas the source of Pastor Ronald A. Prinson's commitment is dependent upon the Holy Scriptures, as quoted in First Timothy, first chapter twelve verse. And I thank Christ Jesus our Lord, who hath enabled me, for that he counted me faithful, putting me into the ministry. And also in Second Timothy, one, twelve B, for I know whom I have believed, and I am persuaded that he is able to keep that which I have admitted unto me against that day. And whereas Pastor Ronald A. Prinson truly believes and often proclaims, God has permitted to me, God trusts me with the Lord. I can trust him with anything that concerns me, anything. And whereas the town of Eatonville recognizes Pastor Ronald A. Prinson for his labor of love, his support to the Eatonville community, and his faithfulness to the congregants of Beth to Hila Ministries. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the town of Eatonville, Orange County, Florida, along with Mayor Angie Gardner, Vice Mayor Rocky Daniels, council members Theo Washington, Marlon James, and Wanda O'Leary, celebrates the seventeenth anniversary of Pastor Ronald A. Prinson. In witness where I have here on Two Set Miami, causes sealed the town of Eatonville, Florida, via fixus, twentieth day of December, two thousand twenty-two. If you've noticed the updated or the update in our agenda, you want to go online, you have the link to them, their accessibility. Then you see some improvements that have been made since this campaign has come aboard us, the town clerk, I think. So, resolution of recognition. A resolution by the town of Eatonville, Florida, recognizing the fiftieth anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks and honoring this achievement. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is a time honored and vital part of our local government and is one of the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides professional and essential link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and intergovernmental agencies at the local, state, and federal levels, along with other essential services. And whereas the Florida Association of City Clerks is a professional membership organization for Florida's municipal clerks and others who work within the clerk's office. And whereas, fact became, began in nineteen seventy-two when it's founded, the late Robert N. Clark, TMC, City Clerk of Sunrise, saw the need for an organization to bring together like-minded people to unite the voice of all municipal clerks to share ideas and to assist one another in the work of the municipal government. And whereas fact celebrates its fiftieth anniversary of two thousand twenty-two, and the golden anniversary is a momentous occasion, worthy of domination and force. Cities, towns, and villages will all join in observation of this celebratory evening. And whereas municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas fact is a primary source for the educational programs, seminars, workshops, and webinars for educating Florida's municipal clerks and those who serve in clerk's office and municipal clerks. Look to fact to provide the training needed to obtain a certified municipal clerk and master municipal clerk certifications. And now therefore. It resolved by the municipal house committee, the town of Eatonville, that the town of Eatonville celebrates a fiftieth anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks. And that fact is commended for fifty years of excellent service provided to the municipal clerks in the state of Florida. Adopted this December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, an official meeting of the town of Eatonville. We have four. And our first one would be John Meechum.
Good evening, and welcome to the night. People often said, if you don't believe in what you're powerful, you don't deserve to talk. Let me just tell you a story about J. W. B. here. And, and I went home from kindergarten, before what you guys are in for. Went home from Allen Mitchell School, my mom attended high school, enormous, which is one of the favorite teams in this Franklin. For the past eight years, I worked for the help Eatonville team. I went to Washington, went to Atlanta with Mayor Bruce Mount, and we did a study on Eatonville, we did a health assessment on the town. We wanted to know, let's help you to lead it, walk, go back, clean water. We walked the help Eatonville team walk, and we did all the streets, we knew where every pipe in the sidewalk was, we knew where all the street lights was out, we did all that, and I love volunteer, because I love my family. The only reason that, we found out that Eatonville had a dive, we just read the statistics, what three percent of African Americans, the national rate is eleven percent. We wanted to know why, we got a fun hospital, Y U C A, we did a health assessment on the town, we opened up a healthy clinic down here, and most people might hear, might know that about. The people in town use it as a health clinic, they need healing. And so that's what we did here. And then also, we worked with people on the help Eatonville team, just for telling other people. Those same people that said that they would be good to us and true to us, and, and we could trust Whitey, they also worked with alcohol group. Think about that, they worked with alcohol group, and we gave our trust into them, we trusted them, they wrote the CRA. They wrote the CRA, they wrote the master plan. They did that and they were going to put a towel for you, that's foul play. I was also told that 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 they were the highest bidder. But the county knew that they would be good people, good students of the property. Now they have dissolved, we got this other group that started land came from nowhere. That wasn't the highest bidder and how they got involved in the game, they was going to sweep back home because they. They won the bid without being the highest bidder, that's foul play guys. We're back to what we were six, eight years ago when the town had the same choice. Do we go O C P S? Or do we go with the Doom Cookman College? And because those black people, those our moms, dads, uncle decided they wanted kids everything so bad, some of the dollars are slave. They went with education and they got stabbed in the back. As soon as they, as soon as that land deal went through, they took Hunterford High School. So some of us believe we want our land back. So we understand that we're not against development, it's a wrong development. We we believe in development, but we believe we can develop something where people come, deposit money here. But they don't necessarily have to live here, we do that through history, culture and we do that through arts. There's people come see the P E C every week, there's tours of people coming Eatonville every week. To visit this this girl for town, once it's finished doing, we're done it's finished doing. And we must believe that we got to fight our land back, we or you guys are smart enough and thoughtful that we can come up with a thing. And then the last thing is that. I talked to one of the people from the developer group, I said, I said, since you guys are so committed to building this development. I said, why don't you give the town a seven point five million that they that they that do give into O C P S? He said to me, I quote, would you give it to the dumb bunch of council members, that's what he said. We see the way fighting the meeting, we say we'll give it to you. So I'm saying, I love you guys, I apologize for that same thing to hurt you, but Zora Noe said it this way. She said, black people speaking story, we speaking hard letters, you know? And listen, she said, you don't really know the negro, but he's white and they're near the inside. So listen, so we're just speaking, we're just speaking, I'm just speaking that Eatonville like I think Eatonville. You mess it up? Oh, I didn't hear, sorry guys. But in Eatonville, we have freedom.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next one is Christie, I believe it's mommy.
Now that's me, I'm I'm gonna pass it on and let you let Don speak now.
Thank you very much. The next one would be Blah.
Good evening, everybody. I said, good evening, everybody. I hear y'all. Listen, I I I have a question. I'm just trying to learn something. And so I can be better able to assist my town. Someone brought attention to the contract between Orange County Public Schools and the town Eatonville. He was Robert Huggett property. It had just said that we were going to receive a certain amount of money back, four million dollars or something, but. In that agreement that Orange County has, if I understand correctly. Out of that four million dollars. The town of Eatonville was going to have to give payback some. Money to Orange County Public Schools for to make this other property and certain things. Again, I don't understand all the legal stuff, but here here here's where I'm at. I I was on a count, are y'all familiar with Scott Wright? Miss Randall, who's familiar? No, um. Theo Mayor, I'm Mr. Danny Rudden. Why I'm Mr. Day? Okay, well, what I'm saying is is that. Then. How much are we actually? And I might not be up on everything, but how much are we actually going to receive back from them? If the land is sold, because they're doing like a double pull, right there. Say Eatonville is selling the property, they're selling the property to Eatonville, Eatonville is selling the property to the developer. But then with some of the profits that we get, we have to pay back for the maintenance of the property. Over a certain amount of time and and from my understanding, the amount that we owe them is not really clear. So what I'm asking is. How can? We move forward, those types of. Things as far as development, when it it just don't seem clear now, I mean, again, I'm not. Kind of act like I'm a legal jargon, I ain't mean. So I'm here to ask these questions of people who I feel like my name is missing asked. Now I know one of the smartest guys I know is Mr. Brown Danny Brown. Are you familiar with this, can you help me understand some of it or should I come to you one-on-one or?
I've heard some of this contract stuff, but a lot of stuff is here or there. So that contract is between Orange County Public Schools and the developer, even if it's not really a contract.
And I I apologize, that's why you looked at me. We did, usually at this one, we don't answer directly.
Oh.
I'm sorry, that's why I looked at me, that's why my mind was so, I do apologize.
Okay. It's pretty good. Okay, I'll be back.
I apologize.
I'll be back.
Thank you. Our man, Nick and Lance is Brian Stow.
Good evening, everyone. I guess topic of conversation, thanks, can be hunted for property, because that's what I'd like to touch on as well. Um, I I I've heard the phrase a number of times in a number of ways, but take take our land back. And so it, you know, set me down a journey of just understanding what entailed, what happened. What transpired because, you know, I'm just coming here, I live here in a house, it's my past, my community and I love it. So I just wanted to understand a little bit further and so what I gathered though is that. I I don't think there's a case of taking it back. It looks like in fifty-one, it was sold legally, there was a holdout from an original ownership trust. Courts overruled and said that they still could proceed. Uh, except before, part of it was sold off from highway and retention plot. Uh, then zoning was approved to be changed, again, everything was done above barn or above board, you know? The courts, council, legal system, they're all there. And then again, in in two thousand nine, the successors of the trust were compensated to the tune of a million dollars. To lift the final de restrictions of the property. So that other development outside of education could happen. Again, the land was sold and resold to a compensate twice over. So I don't think it's a case of taking anything back. But if you guys can come together and find a way to purchase the land back, I don't know, but taking land back is, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like the right. Phrase you're saying. That's all I gotta say on that one. Um. Few months ago, I submitted a proposal. Um, I got, went out there and got quotes for for six pickleball courts where the two tennis courts stand today. Uh, I hope you guys have that in your inbox still, I sent it to everyone here, including town clerk. I guess Mr. Single, you may be on my three thousand habit. I hope you guys can have a review and can, you know, bring some new activities to to us in town. And then lastly, I did speak with Mr. English about the mountainous speed bumps that are all over town. And I guess that falls possibly under the purview of the police, interestingly. But I would like to also put on the table to assess the speed bumps, which at least to my car, which is not a real car, but any stretch. I scrape about half the time and I go over these things, no matter how slowly I go. I scrape the bottom of my car and it's really annoying, so maybe we could convert them into bumps. Long, long, easy to, you know, go over, get slow down, but not straight. And that's all I have, thank you, everyone, have a great holiday.
Down for that. We move on to the consent agenda. For the council minutes, Thursday, summer six, November twenty-eighth, and also extension of the utilization of vacation accumulations point three. This is our motion three, it's been well deserved.
Second correction. Second question. Uh, instead of Betsy, May Johnson is Betsy. G U S S I E.
I'm sorry. Anything applause?
Gussie, G U S S I E and not Betsy.
Okay. And jump to the floor. Alright, so it's been moved like second with the correction, the main correction. All of there say I, I, all of those. This is an agenda three, council decisions, approval of resume to twenty-two dash sixty eight, appointment of the new. Redmi, yes, okay. Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-eight. The resolution of the town council of the town of Eatonville Florida. Designating a chairman of the town of Eatonville Community Development Agency, TOPRA. Provided for conflict, severability and ineffectiveness. Am I lost? It's, I think you got no person.
I think that would be the decision to make, right now?
Yes, so do we? So I'm I'm gonna make the motion, but you don't need to make the motion with the name first.
So right, so you would move to approve of naming a name?
Yes.
That's how I would move to approve the resolution, naming Blake as the. Uh, as the chair.
So right now we need the name first. Alright, so who?
Mayor Blair.
This one, this might switch. Vice Chair is naming Mayor Gordon.
That's how it should always be.
Alright, it's been moved. Um, that, y'all know I'm shocked, right? I can't even see that vice, that the mayor Gardner continues to be the chairman of the CRA.
So you could say move to approve of the week twenty-two dash sixty-eight.
As a top chair. It's been moved, so second. It's been moved the second all the say I, and I all opposed. A rule of resolution twenty-two dash sixty-nine, according to TOPRA vice chair. Resolution twenty-two dash sixty-nine, the resolution of the town council. Of the town of Eatonville Florida, designating a vice chairman of the town Eatonville Community Development Agency, TOPRA. Providing for conflict, severability and ineffectiveness. I said.
Can we, can we, can we table this until you? Want to get vice mayor? Because I've always been a stickler to have issue go hand to hand, you don't have the vice mayor position up next month, right? Anywhere? An admission of.
I thought they've done it at the same time, I I don't remember seeing a date for vice chair.
No, for not vice chair, vice mayor. So vice mayor should be right along the lines with vice chair, so just like the mayor. Should be the chair and and the chair and mayor and chair.
And I thought all that was done in March.
Just in March.
In March. Alright, so motions on the floor, the resolution twenty-two dash sixty-nine, naming. Vice, vice chair Daniels or I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Daniels as the TOPRA vice chair.
Question. Just for my shoe back there, we say full names, it's two days after.
As the vice. Vice Mayor.
I got you out of here, that's what I said, I heard vice chair, so.
So it's been moved the second all the things to have. All of those. Alright, at this point, we are going to move forward with the chief administrator officer's reports. And I and I ask that you do listen closely. As Mr. Stil gets his observations after three weeks for the town. We have a lot of work to do, so I now turn it over to Mr. Stil.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening again. I have quite a list, it's just completed three weeks. My role, I tell people I finally found where the rest was up. Uh, but you know, on a serious note. We do have a lot of town meetings. Uh, I've made an extensive list of my observations within this period. I'll start with an important one. Is that there is no financial strategy. For addressing the town needs. And that is a serious concern. Because what you all do here as boards and councils. Making decisions. Spending decisions, funding decisions. Without knowing the financial situation, the long-term financial situation. It's not very. This is something that I don't know how decisions are made without understanding. Very clearly what your financial situation. Because if someone was to ask me today. How much do we have in convenience? How much do we have capital reserves? What kind of safety nets we have, financial safety nets in every place? We have money in complete. But in terms of preparing for a crisis. It's not sufficient. So while decisions are made on spending, even though they may be small amounts. It all adds up in the end. So it is very critical that we know, I I see a financial plan, long, short, then long-term financial plan and financial strategy. You have to know where you're going. And I mentioned earlier about grant funding to address some of our significant shortfalls. The fundraise. There are no guarantees that funding. For grants will be there, especially with the condition of just now finances. The audit report should have spared all of it, it wasn't a one-time efficiency. It's been going on for decades. That means it's tough. There is not sufficient human resources. To address some of these things. As I mentioned to you earlier in my last report, I don't intend to destroy the issues or challenge the laws and have different solutions. One of the solutions to address the financial situation is we approach the next audit. Is to hire on a temporary basis. Started by public accountant. But I'll be bringing back this board for approval. Get someone that is competent to understand our finances. Make your right accounting interest. To be accountable, correct, report all of our financial activities. All within the C D R and the town, or the audit. Because the last thing I want in my position is to have audit. So that is one of my objectives to. Provide people with clearly good audit. And hoping to be accomplished within a few months with a contact at C D A. Uh, but I'll keep you posted over the rest. The other thing is, I mentioned earlier, is our infrastructure. Well, it's coming. All had many conversations about beyond the rest, it's coming. All had many conversations about beyond what it's coming. Our infrastructure cannot accommodate some. Not in the condition that's. I don't see if you ran off. Actually experience what our infrastructure looked like when we had. That was important. That needs to be addressed. This, as you all deliberate on developments. You have to keep that in mind. What in our current system are committed? And that's everything. That's just not water, perhaps water. This water soon. The other thing that was brought to my attention is that we have been. Notified by the city of all the processes of what this water is soon. They're putting a cap on the volume that we provide to them. Because they are running out of capacity. And I asked what's the plan to deal with that? When will that occur based on certain estimates? Do we know that? What is, what is the plan to deal with that? No answer. That needs to be resolved. We can't wait until that happens and then start looking for solutions. And again, that's why Scott's here from C P A. Because he's our in-house expert, well, not in-house, a contracted expert. To advise us on some of these matters. Because again, this is the lifeblood of the community. We don't have water, we don't have wastewater, we don't have sewage system, we have, we have. So how do we fund these things? If not all brings. As you know, we don't have impact. Almost every person. So essentially, development is occurring. And they're not paying for their impact. Not impacted, just infrastructure impacts that they don't. Putting on assistance. Impacts of the roads. Impacts of services like. But there's no fee. And what does that mean? So if the developer isn't paid for, yes, we're spending. It's your residents, it's your citizens. So a decision needs to be made. Is whether you're gonna continue to have your citizens burdened by that cost that development is. It's really, we have to develop and take. So that is something that will generate. A non-social revenue, because you have to diversify your revenues. And I see that as a significant source of revenue, especially with this size of development that's grown. And it's sad to say, how much have already passed that stage of impact? Didn't pay the dime. So they, they, they got like, like a deep. The fire service. Contract that we have with the county government is escalating at a rate that is not sustainable. You all are aware of the cost of providing on those services. Had a conversation with Chief. He'd say he would need additional. And the cost of providing that service at the level that it's currently provided. It's, it's utilizing more than fifty percent of the operating. So we have to have reliable sources of revenues. Grants are one-time. They can't sustain an operation or an infrastructure. We do not have services. That please imply. And that is. That is necessary. Pay for those. Those officers and the services, especially with the escalation of our contracts. And for residents who are listening to this. This is not to put. Significant burden on, on residents. Because this council has the ability. To structure the rates that you pay. They have the discretion to do so. So the amount you pay can be subsidized by development. The study was done, our review of the study. And I think it's a fair study. That I hope to bring before this council. This building. Vice Chair. Last meeting of the department. I've been there for these, there's no AC in my office, and I just find that half of the building, there's no AC. There's no. Roof is. I have a concern about being prepared for all the people in this building. When you're dealing with road. Using sewage systems, and in my past, I've had to deal with set buildings. Where we can get their access. So this is also. Of how do we maintain our facilities at the standards of needs? We have an obligation to our. And the people who do our business in this office, we want to save the environment. But again, I don't want to scare you all, but I want to. Make sure you understand whatever stuff. Something that. You all. We need to reactivate the code enforcement. This brought to my attention, there are things going on in this community that we don't have code enforcement. I have the opportunity to meet. The. Chair that was on boardment. That would be the board paying to deactivate it, just before. We need to deactivate the board. And to address some of these issues when there's one that we don't address, which is the spread. So solutions. One of the things I intend to do is to develop a form of a qualified. Financial model. Office space. So it's not something I need to outsource. Need to develop a five-year gap. Stand what the needs of this. This community. Hospital. I need to develop a funding stream to fund that. I need to develop. Funding streams to deal with the growth of this, this organization. And those funding sources will come not from raising taxes. Raising things like impact fees. With user fees. Where user fees are paid by the. Businesses or individuals who are using this fee, so it's not a tax. If you don't use it, you don't pay for it. And it's primarily. Here towards development. Because it shouldn't be on the burden of our citizens. I had the opportunity to meet. It's all the integrity. And it was an interesting meeting. I believe they had presented to this council before. And I reviewed their presentation again today, and I was not happy with the presentation. It surprised me, it was a satisfaction. And we didn't get to the core of what they're capable of. And what they are capable of, that I was excited about, is this is a group. That is well-connected and we see in the state. To bring certain types of grants to this community. So I fully intend to come back to you all with a formal presentation. To discuss what they've been offering this, this town. At no cost. And again, it excites me because I've asked staff. But you and Grant, how do you, how do you know the grants are available? The response I got was, oh, we get notified. That was. That was longer. Getting notified is not very proper. And I could just imagine. Millions of dollars that this community has lost. Because real quick. One, you have to go after. That. In grants, very complicated. We don't have the internal resources for two grants. Very complicated, very specialized, and you need experts to do it. Sometimes you need connections and relationships. To get an. Fully. For. Type of contracts, or back reports, or whole presentation. Opportunity to discuss and get them. As I shared with you, my intent to hire. Inside by public. Public. Experts on this year. Bottom line is, we have a revenue issue. Have infrastructure. Start somewhere. Today's where we start.
Um, apologies, I haven't heard any report from Mr. Shepherd, and I personally do not have any reports, so all, all good on our.
Thank you for being here. How's the other lady?
Mr. All, I'd like to say. First, I think this sympathy to our town clerk. Mrs. King, I'm also. First, to her, those sympathy to her. And I would be glad to show you, also, that when she, among the past. Only the same day, she remained here to do everything that she could to make sure that this unit and the preparation. Of the people for this unit. That's what shows you the credibility. And the character of a person that helped work in our town. And I'm really proud to say that she does a very good job. So she didn't let that whatsoever take away from her duty as doing her duty as a servant for town. I know what it feels to lose another father, who was my father, and I don't trust you through myself. Person who I'm. But even that, it did not stop me from doing what I needed to do. The very children of our. So I just had a thank you. Mrs. King. She didn't want our hearts, so I'm with you. Showing you my gratitude. Thank you for the two, the sympathy. Also, we commend for the excellent. Explanation of our C, C A O. So. He really put the nail on the head. About the financial status of this town. I'm not just gonna take this for granted. It cannot be dismissed as neutral. We must do everything so we can have a future here. It will be a sad day if we look back and say, what is it that I couldn't have done? As a leader. As a resident, as a servant, as a business person, that I couldn't have done in order to save my town. And this is not meant to be a threat to anyone. But we need to look to a right event and do things on a different level. And when we talk about development. That's what it's gonna take to move this town to the next level. I have with me a path. This is another development. Proposed up. Three parts. Which is. In the area of West, West Kings behind Deacon Jones. Another development. Okay. And like Mr. Singh has said, he won't leave the U S. Due to the taxes that we pay, it's not enough. So we don't want to put our town in a negative position, but we are struggling. And then one day we take a role by another customer, part of the county. So we want Edenville to be Edenville, and we love Edenville. Let's do things that's gonna keep Edenville where Edenville is, where we need to be. I do have a lot of other concerns, some of these things. I'm gonna turn it over to our C A O. For. First and second reasons for training, for the board, as well as special exceptions, offices. Land use development, those are the things as a council person that we need to be better prepared about. Because we are voting and watching from different types of things that we need to know more about. Other than just voting and looking at the money. Okay, and telling other reasons, that's the reason why we don't want these developments. But it's to make us be better prepared, because these things are going to continue. That is the source of their. Also, I'd like to say that. Mr. Tommy Dixon passed away a little over a week ago. His funeral was on Sunday. Would I get to know the person there, vice? There will. I'll be a team member at the Johnson's there at the same two o'clock. So just be. Be sending prayers and spam at your parents. Also, I'd like to say, Mayor, Christmas to everyone, appreciate people coming here, and have a blessed holiday.
On the bus. One thing I know that from projects, I know about the people she talked about. And the ones that came, who we voted for, that's how we live here, so. It's another company, upcoming, over our, their way, over Edenville. That's just what I'm. C A O said. Head back. Say, these companies want to take another. Waterline, finance, in the streets. In our street. As you know, we are in a just. My first. One or two. Hold up. You get out. With that, stay like that. The unpaid part that that came for was pretty good. Hey, West project. There's nothing in on this. And this project will show, I don't want to pay my taxes, I guess we wouldn't just. Revolves. Doing things right, you know, we don't exist. But we have to show a strong. Body of. We have to show, not personal, so when people come in the building, they will pay the price. We took a development, trade question, took them to. To maybe just to go to where. Put them around. We had, it's all worry, to put in. They had to put thirty thousand dollars in the ground for a manhole that he made. We took this. Back to the ring. And we let these stuff suddenly like. Then starting projects, you couldn't bear to start, to do. They started putting dirt on the ground. Before he started anywhere. He said, you ever hear of family? Anything? I could put pile of dirt for my foundation. Stop. It's getting like dirt, I mean, it's hard like dirt, that's intentional, right? From the aqua project, put all the mine dirt. So when you found it, you gotta get it from the game. But this is saying, we're gonna stay up here strong, we're developing. I don't care, I don't care what, it must pay to play. Since we're gonna take it out, we're gonna take it first. Next thing. We gonna take it. The D's we talked about, Mr. All, Singh talking about. Yeah, we, we, like we were saying years ago, about the impact. Not a tax, impact. He didn't go into it, it says the fact. He got you. He got you. Waterway's bad. Water, water bill. We gotta go up. I mean, we're paying forty-four dollars. Every household, every day. Every household paying forty-four dollars. I'm a forty to you, then you pay. That's okay. Remember the days, I used to say I was there. Well, I've been here. Forty-four dollars. Down. Now, we must pay for peace. They do what you do. It's not always. And we be here every day. Good out of touch. Not in perfect. Not worth it. So, we gotta come a bit out, we gotta do something. We gotta, hey, finish life professionally, let's do it, please. They gonna do, they gonna hit, do that, they gonna hit, I'll do it here. Smallest thing I, not take care of, not feel like, you know, so, you know, so, we got to do something to keep this town working. So, you have holidays, next person, third, go on, final.
Council.
Good evening, everyone. First off, after holidays, everyone, hope everyone have one of the holiday. First off, I want to say kudos to, uh, to Mrs. Singh for not only preparing a good detailed report for something that has some substance and some beat to it. You know, it's one thing to say issues and all that and you have no facts to back it up. When you have facts to back it up, it's a total difference. And contrary to belief, I, I would say, remember seeing that's had this conversation? Everybody think that I was against Mr. Singh, wasn't the case. It was about the whole process and I keep saying, it's about the process. I've heard councilwoman ran out tonight, I heard councilmen watching tonight. And I think everybody's saying the same thing, we want the best, you know, we say some things have taken place in the community, we don't know how it happened. I, I would say to us, we gotta get a house in order. When your house is in order, you don't have these problems. I've heard, I, I wrote down everybody who stood up tonight and talked about the property, it's a process. Don't, don't go around calling people coons and sellouts and all those kind of things, understand the process. And the process is that we've had many opportunities to purchase this property. Mr. King, Mr. Singh said something essential tonight and I don't know if everybody heard. We had decades, you say decades of financial problems in the historic time neighborhood. But if our house was in order, we could purchase it ourselves. But we can't purchase it ourselves because we're on oversight and we can't even go out. Seventy five million dollars, um, that's me and Mr. Long Sing talking tonight about the water and this fourteen million dollars. We should really go out and get along for that. But we can't do it because our house is not in order. If our house get in order, we don't have these problems. We don't have to worry about the backlash coming back at each other and all that. So, all I'm saying is, we gotta get ourselves together. I'm, I'm really for impactees. And just to give everybody some clarity tonight, um, people say, well, why you let it go through and all that? Because our policies and our procedures say that that's the way it has to go. You can't all of a sudden arbitrarily let somebody sign a contract and then change this, hey, I want this hundred million dollars. We should have did that prior to, so that goes to my points tonight of policies and procedures. We gotta have accountability, which I think Mr. Singh is doing a great job right now, accountability. I've had a couple of issues when me ask for documents. He's turning it around real quick. I used to have to wait and I'm, I'm saying, I used to have to wait two weeks, three weeks to get documents. Now, I'm getting documents within twenty four hours. Within twenty four hours, if not the same day, I put two requests in today, not expecting that I was going to get it today. But within a couple of hours, I had the information I requested. That's how we have effective government. So, we got accountability. We gotta have competent people. We need to have competent people. So, a reason a lot of this stuff that's happening in historic time in there, because we didn't have competent people in place. And then our people that have passive. When you start understanding the leadership and understanding those roles, we can move this town forward. My last thing is something that we do need to address and I think I mentioned to Singh is, we have an I T issue. We have a major I T issue. We should be able to get documents in our fingertips. Residents should be able to get documents in the fingertips. We should be automated. Paper takes long. So, then we having to pay somebody to down the entry paper when we should make it automated. Simple things like that. I'm asking also, when mayor, whenever you get a chance, you can tell us an update on, on a collection, public safety is important to me. You start looking at the numbers and all that, public safety is very important, so I'd like to get an update on that. This weekend, as you said, because of relationships and resources, there will be additional tours available. So, if you know, kids will put out something. Some people I partnered with before are promising to use some toys, some bikes, some gift cards. And it's just a giveaway, it's not about name recognition and things, you know people need health, it's called humanity. My last thing is, I have not had an update on the Zora Festival for twenty twenty three. I've been asking for that for two to three months that we need to know this and since I've been in center field, it's always been last minute and from previous times, last minute. I would like to have an update on the Zora Festival because I don't want to repeat of last year and the years before that. And that's my report.
Good evening, uh, Ms. King, please forgive me. I, I got the call and I think I need a secretary because I was in the midst of sending you a text to give me my condolences, but my condolences to you and your family. And you need to just let us know. To the residents of Eatonville, it was, I want to thank my, uh, I guess mentor or, or a older person that sat up here. Who gave me a text one morning and said, have you scheduled your meeting with the C A O? Little dirty things like, oh, no, I haven't and I wasn't. But then listening to this, this man, his wisdom, he said, I think you should, and I did. And what a powerful meeting it was. I sat there shocked, amazed. All of the emotion that goes on when you get, you know, news that you wasn't prepared to hear. Or news that you knew, you thought was true, but then you get confirmation that it's true. And to have that conversation with Mr. Singh and after that meeting, to be encouraged, relieved. To know that this person that we have hired is putting us on the right track, not the total. You know, give the credit to, because we all up here, we make the decision, but to have someone to help us move in the right direction, you know? I, I told him, and like I said, it publicly, I said, my only thing was, what were we going to pay? But at the end of the meeting, I was like, man, we gotta find more money, so. Want to say, you know, thank you. We are still the, the leaders that can do, but you know, with leadership like you, Mr. Shepherd and other individuals, uh, Mr. Bargainiers that can help us, uh, Mr. Dix. That can help us move in the right direction, we can do it. One of my New Year's resolutions was, you hear all the time, why people don't come to council meeting? Sometimes I think it's just a cop out, y'all argue too much, y'all argue too much, we just have to help you debate. Depends on how you do it. We are so passionate about this town and what we have up here, that I'm probably willing to fight you about. Because I just, I love this town just that much. And I think all of us put our emotions sometimes, uh, out there and it comes, it comes across as, oh, you're ignorant or you guys don't know how to get along. We, we know how to get along, we go with. So, I'm hoping that my fellow council people will have a New Year's resolution is to show the public that we can get along, that we can move forward. And let's, let's fight in workshop, let's fight behind closed doors and argue and call each other this and that. But when we get on that camera and we come here before the people at seven thirty for the official business, that we put on our best and we treat each other with respect. We, I, I try to lead by example, by raising my hand, not over talking people, waiting for the chair to acknowledge. So that we can communicate effectively and show this world, show this community, show the people around that we can't get along, we're not going to settle for, you know, letting someone come in and take Eatonville. A lot of people, uh, probably, you know, see the tension sometime, but I've always said that, and one of my olive branches, not olive branches, but just to say we can get along, is that we may, the mayor and I may have differences. In how we handle certain situations. But I've always said that the mayor should be the mayor and the vice chair of CRA, I'm sorry, and chair of CRA. And then wh- whoever she has as the vice mayor should be the vice chair as well. I had the pleasure of sitting on a board with, uh, Mayor Mount, not Mayor Mount, I'm sorry, Mayor Grant back in the day. And I was the senior, uh, councilperson up here, so I just knew, you know, just protocol that the senior person would get the vice mayor chair. I just knew that when I shut the door. And when he said, uh, this other councilperson, they, I went along with it because I realized that it's not about ego, it's about who that person wants. So, to show that we can get off, there was unanimous, we can go back and look at the vote, it was unanimous. Now, somebody with ego or, you know, pride issue or whatever, it's not, hey, you doing it. No, it should be their pride, their, uh, uh, right to assign or appoint whoever they want to, and we as a board should go along with it. That is some of the issues that we have sometimes, and that's why we clashed. Because sometimes some of the appointments should be just, okay, is that what you, is that, that's who you want, okay, we're going to go with it. That's when it comes, when it comes with confirming. So, you know, these are things that we're learning to, to see how we get along. And I think if we just continue to jolly corn and get along with each other, we're going, we're going to be all right. You know, uh, I'm, this is going to be real quick, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, be safe out there and, uh, with the Lord's blessing, we'll see you next year.
Mrs. King, I'm so excited to see this one. Massillon is flying, King of Glory, if you missed it, oh my gosh, you missed a street, I really enjoyed it. And I don't, I don't vote, I don't do crowds very much, but I, I'm so glad I went out. For that, Mr. Singh did talk about reactivating the code enforcement board, we also have to adjust the board, we have other boards that need to be filled. Mr. Singh spoke to all we do, we do all we can do, those boards have to be filled by citizens. We can't fill on two boards. So, please consider being active on a board. And if you don't know about boards, please reach out to the town clerk, because we have many, many able bodies and minded citizens. Pickleball tournament, I sat there and watched it, I saw Newman and Newman and Jones win, I was like, oh my gosh, this is like, yeah, we're talking about. It was like standing up ping pong balls, but it, it does look fun, it does look fun. Wake point. I'm not sure when you got that information. I think it's old, it is old, because I think that, that company purchased seventy makers, but walked away. And, and I'm saying that to say, if you would just, please run it through the C A O to check first, then, you know, then, then people don't walk away with misinformation. But just hear it through Mr. Singh and then let him know what's going on. There's no wake point, um, development. Chair assignments, it does not matter who you think, well, I'm, I'm okay with a different chair every year, everyone gets experience, everyone has different ideas. One of the reasons I protect the C R I, and I said this in a sentence, is we had that grant tied to the snow. And when that grant was established, we knew it was reversible. So, we not protect that. And, and that was one reason that I protect. And when the forest started going on, I just stood still. But, but I have no intentions of harming this town at all. Fight too hard to get a Mr. Singh, wow, we now go and fight against the things that he stand for and things that all is saying. Last one, please, um, I, I have interview questions. We do have a plan in mind, do you know that? So, just give us time, come, let me know what's going on. And do know that we're there, uh, in time. So, but just give us time to make sure that, that we're the same, same age and we'll definitely. Everyone, please, happy holidays. Oh, office closure. Office closure.
Uh, we will be closed this Friday and Monday. For business.
Uh, that's my thing, so, so, I mean, I would say hard. Take this guy on video and hear him late and white kid. I'll give you a second. Mental health, pass, I'm going fast, I'll pass over fast, please get up.
All right. With that being said, speaker is seven, I mean, first only.
Someone.
Second, all things done.
Aye.